Just gonna give it as down the, down the road.
I feel like I need to, I will, I forget, and I forget what place I already am now when I see the parking places, like which one is, which one is here?
All right, are you guys ready?
We're ready, let's do it.
All right, it is six o'clock and we are, have adjourned from the executive meeting and we have no, nothing to report as a result of that. And at six o'clock, we will open the city council meeting. Happy Valentine's Day, everybody. And I believe we are going to have invocation and pledge of allegiance from Ms. Clarkson.
For God to come before you as a community of citizens engaged in the well-being and the future of the place that we all hold dear, and that's why we're gathered here tonight. Please be with all of us as we discuss and share ideas, thoughts, and opinions, and ultimately make decisions that we believe are in the best interest of Kerrville and the future of Kerrville and its citizens. Thank you for the blessings and the gifts that are bestowed upon us in this beautiful place that we live, and we ask that you protect and guide our minds, our hearts, and our desires to do all of the things that we do in your will. In intonating, we pray, amen.
Religious to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we are ready for announcements, Stuart.
Thank you, and I'll be brief. Someone just reminded me that we need to be brief because it's Valentine's Day. Just a couple of things that we've got going on, one at the Kerrville Fire Department, is raising funds for a six-wheel all-terrain vehicle. We've been using a golf cart that has been outfitted for emergency services, but it can only be effectively used along the river trail. We have a matching grant fund. When we reach $30,000, the Community Foundation of the Hill Country will match the other 30, and we are at, what is that, 26, 238?
Twenty-six, twenty-six, 238.
So we're with less than 4,000, so if anybody is interested in donating to that, you can go to the Community Foundation of Hill Country, their website, and it's pretty easy to find there, and we should be crossing that goal soon, looking forward to it. All right, let me remember how to go forward here. There we go. The Kerrville Police Department, Kerrville Fire Department, and the Deed It Center are promoting File of Life cards. We encourage everyone to fill these out as soon as possible. If you don't know what these are, this is a File of Life packet, and inside you fill out a File of Life, I guess it's just kind of a summary of all the medications that you're on and any health problems that you might have. It's very important because if you have an emergency situation at your house and you're not able to respond when KFD or KPD shows up, you can put a magnet on this and put it on your refrigerator, and that's the first place that they look. I encourage everybody, not just, this is not just for any age group, everybody should do it because it sure does help when you have emergency situations, and I know that too. KFD and KPD both would appreciate that. Okay. There we go. Our activity guide.
Can I ask you a question on the File of Life?
Sure.
Where can we get those?
We can get them at Kerrville Fire Department's central offices, the Police Department have their central office too, and at the Deed It Center.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Our activity guide for 2023 is now available, and that's available online, and it's in a format where you can actually page through it. Looks really nice, encourage everybody to go out and check it out. There will be 8,000 copies mailed out within the next few days, so you'll be getting those too. Check it out both places, but a lot of fun to go through that, a lot of stuff going on this year, as usual, so we encourage everybody to go check that out. And finally, Saturday night is Daddy Daughter Dance. I think as of this morning, there were 13 tickets left. We're gonna have 450, 450 people there, so great event, we are looking forward to it. And if you're one of the 13 that manages to get in, we encourage you to call soon, we'll be happy to have you. And I do think we have, I don't know if y'all have announcements, but I do think we have an update on the recent storm, is that right?
I think so. Counsel, anybody have anything they need to add? All right, Chief?
Good evening, Counsel. I wanted to give a brief update on Winter Storm Mara and our response to that. The last time I stood in front of y'all, so the workshop, we kind of showcased our inclement weather team mitigation and preparedness actions for each department. As I said, I believe on the way out, we love our Texas weather and can be very unpredictable, and that it was. As you will probably also know, that tonight, two years ago, was Winter Storm Uri, is when it also started. As you learned from the workshop, your city of Kerrville's team was prepared and able to implement our action plan to keep our citizens and visitors safe during Winter Storm Mara. On Monday, the 30th, the city of Kerrville's emergency management moved to a Level 3, increased readiness for the entire operational period, starting on midnight on January 31st till noon on February 2nd. We gathered information from the National Weather Service and the State Operations Center on the winter, on the winter storm at least two times per day. This provided real-time data on the impact to the regions across Texas and provided key intel for us to make an informed decision for our citizens and employees for the city of Kerrville. We initiated daily briefings with the inclement weather team, which also helped us prep equipment, stock inventory as necessary, and we reviewed our department plans and procedures. The daily briefings were comprised of the weather forecast and a report out from each division, from emergency management, streets, police, fire and EMS, utilities, water and wastewater, IT, parks, garage, city administration, and then the public information office. We also communicated with Peterson, Salvation Army, Kerr County, the Republic Services, Tech Dot, and K-Pub for regular updates. And to provide a little bit of information on our streets department, I'll introduce Stuart Barron.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Tonight I have with me Joel and Brandon, who are the, Joel is the Superintendent of Streets, and Brandon Assistant Superintendent of Streets. I thought it'd be appropriate for them to be here. They carried a big portion of this weight on themselves. I'll go through a little bit of what, how they prepared for this event, so y'all kind of get a scope and a feel for how, how big that is. It started, probably last summer, we start thinking about the winter and trying to figure out what we're gonna do that winter, so they start buying, buying, buying salt, about six to eight months ahead of time, so we'll have it. That is a big portion of why, or their effort is a big portion of why we didn't have a big of an event as we could have had. So they were prepared. When, when the storm, right before they got here, they started buying chat, so we had chat and salt that we mixed together and put out on the streets. They implemented a 24-hour-a-day operation with their operators, eight-hour shifts, but they, they manned their station 24 hours a day. When the, when the crews, when the storm finally hit, they went out and de-iced the bridges, the streets, police stations, fire stations, to access for all the emergency vehicles. They monitored the streets for 24 hours a day. They helped with water main breaks. If, if we did have a water main break, they put de-icing agent on that so those won't freeze over and cause places for accidents. Health Tech stopped with some internal streets in the city, and then they did the report outs at 5:00 AM, 10:00 AM, and 3:00 AM. So every time that we'd have an event, they would get on, on with us all and tell us what kind of condition the streets are in. And then after the storm, they cleaned it all up. So we're still in the process of picking up some of that stuff, but all in all, picking up down trees, picking up chat, cleaning up the streets. So our appreciation to Joel and Brandon for keeping the streets open during that event. It is a 24-hour operation, and thanks to them, we were able to have a less of an event than we could have had. So that I'll turn it back over to, and Joel and Brandon, watch though. Joel, stand so everybody knows.
Taking my notes.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're real thankful for our streets department. As you said, they did a lot of heavy lifting to kind of prepare the streets, our bridges, and steep inclines, that, and they did a, he was correct, at 5:00 AM, Dale'd report to us so we can make that decisions for our city key staff information for employees, citizens, and visitors. Parks was out there, they continue to monitor the safety of the customers at the, at the park, and I believe we had 31 customers out there, and they were also prepared to respond to assist streets with barricades or debris removal as necessary, and they also winterized all our facilities and sidewalks. Public safety, as the fire chief, and I'll also say for the police chief, we're very grateful for our community kind of trusting in our message to stay home and stay safe. We're proud to report that there were no motor vehicle crashes due to ice and only a few falls on the ice during the entire operational period. Overall, so a reminder that the major regional impact of the storm was only 30 miles to the north and to the east, and it brought the city of Austin to a standstill without power. We're prepared and ready to respond as a team, and we have continued to prepare and identify mitigation actions to improve our capacity of respond. After the event, we completed an after-action review with the team, and unanimously agreed that our leadership, so our teamwork and our experience, proactive response and external partnerships were a major strength. We will always have the opportunity to improve, and will continue to ensure the safety and security of our employees, citizens, and visitors, and I thank you for your support and your trust. Any questions for us?
Chief, you'll pass on to the rest of your team and to the streets. If you guys will pass on to the rest of your team, thank you for a job well done. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, we come to visitors and citizens.
Madam Mayor, we have three signed up.
All right.
William Beard, I'm sorry, Lillian Beard.
Happy Valentine's, everybody.
Valentine's Day.
I have two points that I want to bring up. Of course, the library, what's being done with that, and the library board not meeting when it was supposed to. I understand there's a new meeting date at the library for the library board that we can attend, and thank you for that. I don't know who got that arranged, but thank you. But we're still trying to keep our children away from the books in the library that are not appropriate for them. We're still, we don't want the books banned, we don't want them removed. All we want to do is protect our children, especially our small children, from being able to get a hold of some of these books. You know, put them in a room like I suggested once before, put them in a room, move the handle from here up to here where the small ones can't get a hold of the handle to go in that room. You know, just something simple, it doesn't have to be something elaborate that takes a lot of money to do, but just please, please, protect our children. They're our future. They're the ones that's going to be sitting there at some point in time, and we want them protected from the stuff that this world is going crazy with. And I don't believe our children in Kerrville need to be exposed to all of that. And the second point I want to make, and Ms. Hughes, I'm not trying to say anything really against you, but from talking to others in town, talking to others in Fredericksburg, your name is going around both cities about when you stood up and you slammed the Holy Bible down on the counter, and I just wanted you to know that. I didn't know if you were aware of it or not, but people are talking about it. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Monica Allen.
I'm a little too short for that, but I hope you can hear me. My name is Monica Allen. I am with BCFS Health and Human Service. I am the mentor supervisor there for our YAD program, and YAD stands for Youth Adverting from Delinquency. We service our youth from ages 10 to 17 who are on probation, who need a positive person in their life to give them some good resources and encouragement. And my ask from you and everyone in this room is that if you or you, if you or someone you know would like to invest some time in our kids and in our youth, please send them our way. They do have to pass a drug and background check, but once that comes back good, we can move forward in pairing you with someone who is really a delight to be around. These kids are funny, these kids are enjoyable to be around, and they need someone to kind of tell them, like, they don't have to continue on the path of delinquency, that they can turn that around and be a part of our community in a positive way. So that is just what I'm asking. You would love to come and tour our facility, we would love to have you. If you would like to come to one of our events, I will continue to invite, and you are more than welcome to just drop in at any time, so you can see what our program is about and see what these kids are about, and they would love to connect with you too. They have expressed the, the desire to want to know some of our city leaders and some of our city officials and some of our community members as well. That way they know what is out there, because a lot of them aren't informed of different jobs or occupations or hobbies that are even in Kerrville. And so if we can get more community involvement in our program, I think it can turn our kids' perspective around for the better. So again, I'm Monica Allen with BCFS Health and Human Service. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica.
Bruce Drakey.
Bruce Drakey, 821, excuse me, 821 Earl Garrett. I am so glad to be back here because Kerrville is certainly the best place to live I have ever lived. And we just think about all the things that are going on, the Arcadia's ramping up for another great year. Childcare, we had an interesting presentation at the EIC the other night about them looking at how can we bring more jobs to Kerrville and the need for childcare in town, and they've identified several opportunities of how to do that, and they're working on some grant things, and I'm sure they're gonna be here to talk about it. But that's the kind of community we live in. They look at what we, our needs are, and how can we solve those things, and you folks all lead that, and that's really cool. Housing, Pablo's here tonight, I'm here tonight, we're all working on housing, and how can we get more housing, especially higher-density stuff into the area? And that's exciting because we need that, that 2019 housing study that Mayor Blackburn did, really, we haven't accomplished a whole lot yet. But I can tell you, and it's not just Pablo and I, but there's a number of us who are in the community who are working on that, and the folks inside Kerrville and from outside are bringing creative ideas to Kerrville, and a great example of that is a workshop at 3:00 this afternoon. Thank you, touchdown, we created a public facility corporation. That is the biggest news in Kerrville in the last four years, and I am so grateful that we are a forward-looking city. We looked forward when we created ASR wells. I think, Joe, you might have been on the council at that time, were you mayor?
A long time.
A long time ago. But we were the, like, the second city in the country to create ASR wells, and not to just go to water, but to think about the forward-thinking that Kerrvillians have had for many, many years. That's what makes this such a great community, that we look to the future, we look to our neighbors, we look how to build each other up, not tear each other down, and I love it, and you all are leading us, and I just wanted to say thank you, because I haven't been here in a while, and I feel badly it's taken me so long. Happy New Year, thank you, keep leading us well.
Thank you, Bruce. That's the end of the citizen speakers, and for the consent agenda, we have no citizens signed up. All right. Counsel, is there anyone who needs to pull anything from the consent agenda?
Every one of them, Mayor. I'm just kidding, I don't need to pull anything. I move to approve on the consent agenda.
We have a second, second. Brendan, all in favor, raise your right hand, and it passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, let's go to 5A. Shelley, if you will read this in, please.
Ordinance number 2023-06, second reading, and ordinance in menu chapter 60 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Kerrville, Texas, by changing the zoning for properties known as 402, 405, 406, 407, 409, 410, 411, 413, 414, and 415 West Water, consisting of the Westland addition from a single-family residential with accessory dwelling unit zoning District R1A to a residential transition zoning District RT, providing other matters relating to the subject. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right, this is our second reading. Counsel, do you, any of you have a question for staff? All right, do we have a motion?
I move that we approve ordinance number 2023-06 on second reading.
Second? Joe, thank you, all in favor, raise your right hand, thank you very much, and it passes unanimously. 5B, Shelley?
Ordinance number 2023-07, second reading, and ordinance in menu chapter 60 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Kerrville, Texas, by changing the zoning of a property known as 3800 Loop 534, consisting of Lot 1, Block 5 of Legion Hills Phase 4 subdivision, being approximately 3.56 acres and within the city of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas, from a medium-density residential zoning District R2 to a like commercial zoning District C2, and providing other matters relating to the subject. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right, thank you very much. This is the second reading. Any questions, Counsel, for staff? All right, do we have a motion?
I move to, okay, I move to approve ordinance number 2023-07.
A second. And we have a second from Brenda, all in favor, raise your right hand, thank you very much, and it unanimously passes. 5C, Shelley?
Ordinance number 2023-08, second reading, an ordinance annexing a tract of land to the corporate limits of the city of Kerrville, Texas, such property making up approximately 0.08 acres, and generally located adjacent to and south of Lehman Drive in the area that Lehman Drive intersects with Leonard Lane. Such property more specifically describing this ordinance and being located within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of and adjacent to the city limits, adopting the service agreement, establishing the zoning for the annexed property as a public and institutional PU zoning district, and providing other matters relating to the subject. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
Good job.
Thank you.
Counsel, any questions for staff? Do we have a motion? I'll move to approve ordinance number 2023-08 on second reading.
And I'll second.
Second, all in favor, raise your right hand, and it unanimously passes again. Thank you, Counsel. All right, 6A, Shelley?
Consider a request for the granting of a major waivers pursuant to Section 82-37 of the City's Code of Ordinances. Such waivers concerning, one, the delayed submission of a security for public infrastructure, two, approval to reduce such security following the city's acceptance of phased installation, three, the early termination of an improvement agreement, all waivers applicable to property being a 37.10 acre tract referenced as Creekside Apartments Phase 1A to be addressed as 102 Wellborn Way and generally located near the intersection of State Highway 16. We do have two citizen speakers signed up.
All right, thank you. Drew?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. This is a request for a subdivision waiver, and here's the general area of Highway 16 as the area specifically just north of Camp Meeting Creek. Here's one of the pages of the preliminary plat. Preliminary plat included a much larger acreage than just this parcel, but there's the parcel in question today. Here's the schematic for the waiver, both with and without. There are no physical changes to the subdivision layout based on the waiver nor the infrastructure request. This request is really geared more towards the timing of requirements for the processing of the plat, the infrastructure improvement agreement, so I'll kind of go through these comparisons here. Without the waiver, the applicant would be required with the application of the final plat, of course, their application, the final plat, the improvement agreement, because they are delaying their infrastructure installation, and to fund their financial security at the time of application. That application then would go to the Planning and Zoning Commission roughly 30 days later, or just under 30 days. Financial security would then remain in place until the completion of the project, and then the improvement would run with the land. And what they are requesting is to actually place the funding for the financial improvement or the infrastructure improvements after P&amp;Z has approved the plat. The plat still will not be recorded until it's funded, but that saves them their roughly 30 days of that money sitting in place, or at least 30 days, until P&amp;Z approves it, and that helps their financial backers then fund the project, because they'll have Planning and Zoning Commission's approval. Additionally, the financial security will have regular takedowns, because that'll actually be the funding for the project, so that'll be approved by both the applicant and city engineering staff as they go through their infrastructure inspections. And then the improvement agreement will be terminated at the completion of the project, rather than continuing onward. This is one lot for this plat, so that if that lot's sold, the infrastructure they're installing goes with it. The reason for that improvement agreement normally to be filed with the deed records is for multiple properties in, within that improvement agreement, so future buyers would be aware that that improvement agreement was in place. In this case, again, it's one lot, so they control that one lot, they control the infrastructure, so that's not necessary for it to continue with the land indefinitely, but to terminate once the infrastructure has been accepted by staff. So with those, you've got your more detailed analysis in the back, your backup, but staff does support the recommendation for the waiver for all three waivers with the addition of Section 82-33D5. That's the additional criteria for the planning commission to approve the plat based on having that funding in place, which obviously they're gonna delay until after P&amp;Z reviews the case.
I'm sorry, say what you said again, you are recommending with that exception?
With that inclusion, so it's actually four waivers. They requested three, we're adding a fourth because of...
We're just hearing about the fourth one tonight.
It's in your backup. It's part of their first request to delay the funding of the, the improvement agreement and financial security. However, the Planning and Zoning Commission criteria for approval is that the funding is in place, but that's a different section.
So that's the fourth waiver.
Correct.
Okay.
Is it, no, that's already, I think that's already in one of them. It's in there, right, Mr. Hayes?
It's in there. Yes, it's in there.
But we're not, so then we're not adding a fourth, it's part of one of them, one of the...
The item title has three.
So their additional, their initial request was 82-33B2.
Okay.
82-32E5.
Right. Okay.
By approving the first one, 33B2, we also need to waive 82-33D5, because that is the planning commission's criteria for approval tied to the funding of that improvement agreement.
Okay, yeah, now I'm confused, because I don't see that anywhere in my packet, anywhere in the letter that we received from...
It's under the first bullet point on the staff analysis.
Right, so but that's, so we don't have to make that a second, or a fourth waiver, because that's combined with the first.
Okay.
Am I right?
We are waiting four sections.
Right, right, okay.
Three requests.
Okay, we're on the same page with them.
Yes.
Okay, I was assuming we're adding another waiver, but that one is already part of the first one that they're requesting, it's just two different sections that we're waiving.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Drew, have we done this before?
We have not. Since we've adopted this subdivision code, this version of the subdivision code, we have not had a project go through the improvement agreement, and so this is kind of learning curve for both sides, both the applicant and staff. With Counsel's direction, we may actually bring some changes to these sections to the planning commission to make this a little easier, because this applicant, as well as others, have voiced concern over the timing and the sequencing, so we may be bringing that to...
Now, they have to, they, in this, in this application, in this request, they have to prove up that there is a hardship, in this case, a financial hardship.
Right.
I would think that this financial hardship would apply to pretty much the applicant.
Correct.
So I would hope that we would see this more as a change to the ordinance in the future, so waiving something that would always be a financial burden too.
Yeah, for those projects that are tying everything together in one lumped funding agreement, the timing of this, given today's market, I think will be more the standard than the exception, so...
This will set a precedent.
Right.
What are the risks for us?
I would say largely no risk, because if they do not, planning commission can approve the plat, if they don't ever build the infrastructure or fund the infrastructure, then the plat never gets recorded. They still don't have a buildable lot on paper or physically on the ground until that infrastructure is completed.
It is reducing their cost burden because you don't need to have the security before, for that amount of time, and then once they start to lay the infrastructure, then we can take down the security amount to coincide with the amount of infrastructure that's.
Correct.
So it's just a matter of timing is what it is.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Yeah.
What was the purpose when we were looking at, uh, adopting the subdivision code for requiring them to put in their funds before their plat is approved with P and Z?
I do not recall that discussion.
Okay.
Obviously, we, we need to have the funding in place before we record the plat.
Right.
Why it got moved all the way to the application, I, I don't recall the specifics.
Okay.
Something, this has been done other places also, I would assume.
It is.
Becoming commonplace.
Many cities will allow the, and similar to our, I guess, more standard process. P and Z can approve the plat before they build the infrastructure. The plat doesn't get recorded until it's completed. Same thing with the funding in this case. P and Z could review it based on the standards of the subdivision ordinance, and then if they approve it, the applicant gets their funding, provides security for that, and then goes and completes the construction. So, standard practice.
Council, any further questions before we, uh, hear the public?
Can you help me understand the second waiver request? Um, eighty two dash thirty two E five, the escrow account.
So the current ordinance does allow for an escrow account as part of the, or as, as an option for the financial security?
Yes.
Um, in this case, it's a, a different type of escrow account. So that'd be at a bank of, that we both agree upon. City would have rights to withdraw as well as the applicant. So both parties would have rights to withdraw money for that infrastructure as they go through completion of that project.
Okay.
Um, so they'll be, they'll be drawing down the security as the project is completed.
Right.
In comparison, if they just did a bond or a letter of credit, that funding would stay in place, fully funded until the completion of the project, and then all of it would be released.
Gotcha, so when we're looking at sub, sub, section five, E five, which part does it, does it restrict them on that? Because I was looking at the language there and what it has here in the, this paragraph that we're, I guess, the, the new terms, I guess, or regulations, you could say. Um, and I see the one hundred and ten percent, that they have to put one hundred and ten percent of the estimated costs into that escrow account, that's the same. And I guess the main difference is the, the schedule or the period where they, they withdraw.
Right.
Where is that, where, where am I missing that on, in the code?
The biggest part is the code is not clear if that hundred and ten percent remains in place until completion or if they can draw down throughout the project.
Okay.
We just wanted to make it clear to council that they are going to draw down that security as they complete portions of the project.
Okay, so it's not necessarily, I guess, we wouldn't necessarily be waiving a specific provision there. We're simply adding something, adding another term to say that, because it doesn't say one way or another whether you have to wait till completion or whether you can withdraw throughout the, the project, the, the construction of it, we're adding a term in that you can withdraw.
And that'll be included in the improvement agreement consistent with the waiver.
Is that how waiver requests usually work? Like, are we allowed to add, if, if something's not in there? Because it, to me, I'm assuming a waiver is, and I guess by definition, it's your getting rid of a certain por, portion of the regulations, which in this case, we're not getting rid of anything, we're in fact adding something to it.
That's clarifying, right?
We're clarifying by adding something to it, I mean, we can't clarify unless we add it, something, that provision to it.
We're removing the provision that the security stays in place to the completion of the project.
We are taking that away.
And allowing them to draw down throughout the project.
So that's what I'm trying to figure out, where it says that in the code.
That'd be the.
Oh, until after, not interested until after. That's just the refund portion, right? That's what we're looking at?
Correct. So rather than refunding at the completion, they are using this funding to pay for the project.
Got you. Okay.
All right, any other questions? All right, our first speaker?
Joanne Hagemeyer.
Thank you, mayor and council. Um, my name is Joanne Hagemeyer. I live in Kerrville Hills Ranch Estates, which is adjacent to the apartments and the housing that is, is being talked about. And our concern is really, um, and it talks about infrastructure in this, um, letter, um, is the, uh, the building of their crossing, um, Crossing Creek is what they call it, and, uh, it, to go over Camp Meeting Creek and the traffic flow. Um, they're, they're not really talking too much about the complete entrance into the facility and, because later on there'll be houses and that, and so we want to make you very well aware of what the traffic, um, impact might be in that area on Camp Meeting, uh, Road, which is for Kerrville Hills Ranch Estates, Stone Ridge Estates, and Hosado Lutheran Church. We all use that road right now. So in addition, would these, the, this apartment complex, the houses that are going to be down there, and, um, we want to make sure that that bridge goes over Camp Meeting Creek while they still have money in that hundred and ten percent, and, and all of that gets done, plus the front entrance, to alleviate severe traffic with all of that coming and going on, on Highway sixteen. And I think you would see, um, some issues, some issues of the comings and the goings of all of that that's happening. So we just want to make sure that that is part of their infrastructure to be completed before they open the doors of those apartments, so that there's a, a good flow of traffic across Camp Meeting and hopefully their entrance to the front of that, that subdivision, so that we can all get out in a timely amount of time to get to where we have to go, you know, work, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bruce Stricki.
Bruce Stricki, eight two one Earl Garrett Street. I, I'm, I'm glad that we're talking about this, because, Kim, you pointed out that the ordinance isn't very clear on some of these things, and, and we need, especially with a big project like this and the big infrastructure going across Camp Meeting Creek and stuff, that's a lot of money to be sitting out there all that time. And so I just wanted to raise a couple of points. Eighty two dash thirty seven B, the criteria, paragraph one, sub-paragraph A, that's a place we need to look at, because I'm, I'm not sure that any of the reasons for waiver, we, we get any of those with this particular thing, and I'm not trying to be critical, I'm trying to talk right to what you were saying. We need to change this ordinance and address it. The, the other thing that does concern me about it is that especially with a big project like this, Kyle and, and Alex or whoever's doing the infrastructure inspection and stuff almost becomes like the owner's representative, where they have to go out and look at the percentage of work that's been completed and do that in a way that values the money to be released well. And that's not something they normally do. I'm not saying they can't do it, I, 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 I don't know. I just know, having been an owner's rep in the past, that's a very important job, because the money that's left in that escrow account is the money that's supposed to be able to complete it. And we, we take ten percent up in front, in the back. When I was a contractor, we did ten percent retention, this way we do a ten percent up front. It's all good, but it's very important to the project that we value that correctly. And I'm not making a criticism of Kyle or Alex, I'm just saying it's something we haven't, we don't normally do, and, and that is something to consider in the, in the thing at all. And then, oh, doggone it, I should have made a note. This, I, 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 I've lost it, but it wasn't a big, it was a small thing. This is an important project for Kerrville, and I'm not involved in this project. It's not, I didn't sell this dirt, I'm not in the dirt, I'm not leasing the dirt. This is an important project for Kerrville, back to what, you know, the housing study from twenty nineteen. This is something that's been coming for some time. I know Pablo and his team have got a lot of work into it. We need this in the community to have this higher-density product that's a great location for it. The utilities are there, and, and I'm fully in support of this, but I do think we need to work on this ordinance. So thank you all for considering that.
Thank you.
Um, I did not ask if the owner was here and wanted to say something, or owner's representative? Would you like to come to the mic and say a few words?
Thank you, mayor. Carl Schwab, Reef Holdings, Dallas, Texas. For the record, nineteen oh nine Woodall Rogers Freeway. Really appreciate your consideration for our request for these exceptions. Uh, we've been working fairly diligently with staff, and I'd like to acknowledge, uh, uh, beyond the call of duty effort of Drew Paxton and his effort as director to help us get there, recognizing new ordinance, new considerations, new regulations. And I would like to point out a couple of things, though, that have been mentioned tonight, maybe make some clarifications, just if I can take a moment to do that. Uh, with regards to the, uh, summary that was presented, uh, for your consideration and the recommendation for approval, without going into the details, roughly, phase one of this project, two hundred and sixty-two units. Reef Holdings owns now two hundred and forty-two acres inside the city limits of Kerrville. Uh, we've made a fairly significant commitment, uh, to the city and to, uh, our, and that's because we like Kerrville, and we see that Kerrville has a, a, a great opportunity. We've listened to the city leaders that have indicated that there is a need for more residential, and we're largely all about residential at Reef Holdings. So you know who you're dealing with. We control currently about four point five billion dollars worth of assets and mostly multifamily and hospitality. The multifamily ranges in product type across the southeast, several states, primarily, as it turns out, primarily south of the Mason Dixon Line, all the way to the Atlantic, and not much west of, west Texas. And then the hospitality bracket, uh, runs the gamut from, uh, a beachfront resort properties, two of which we have under construction, getting ready to get under construction in Galveston Island, significant project. Myrtle Beach, and we own now fifteen hotels in Georgia and Florida along the coast of various product levels. Point being is that we've had a lot of experience. I personally have had forty, gosh, plus years, I'm afraid to say, of construction and development experience coming out of an architectural background. For this project, uh, we're looking to bring about, it's about in the total four and a half million dollars of public infrastructure out of about a fifty million dollar product, project, and hard costs. These are just hard costs, not the soft costs. So I tell you that to put in perspective the infrastructure being what we've called in the spine road, uh, Wellborn Way, coming in off Highway sixteen. And if I could speak to Mrs. Hagemeyer, if I pronounce that correctly? Concerns over traffic, we're not lost on the traffic considerations. Uh, we see sixteen as a two-lane, state-controlled facility. We've employed the traffic engineering services of HAF out of San Antonio. I've worked with HAF's Dallas office for thirty years now. They're pretty good at what they do, and they're probably the largest private procurer of, uh, Tech Dot, uh, traffic and transportation documentation that Tech Dot doesn't do in-house. So, uh, that's good and bad for the developer side, because they are also extremely sensitive to what, and intuitive about what Tech Dot wants and what Tech Dot needs to see in order to get permits from Tech Dot. We have a divided entry off sixteen. We're providing a D cell lane, uh, down, down sixteen, sorry if I'm running over.
Uh, Carl, go ahead and finish.
Not, and we're providing a left-turn lane north. So there's a crossing over Camp Meeting Creek on sixteen that constricts that stacking lane, but Tech Dot has approved that. There was also concerns, uh, maybe in our, I forget when the hearing was, that there was some concerns expressed about, uh, Camp Meeting Road, I believe it is, and the intersection. That's identified in our traffic and transportation study, or TIA, Traffic Impact Analysis, and, uh, that will be, uh, an improvement that occurs upon the second, subsequent phases of density. This first phase is largely going to be in and out off of that entrance on sixteen. So the spine road is going to come through and cross Camp Meeting Creek. The requirement for that, uh, the, the minimum requirement for that would have been a ten-year crossing, ten-year flood elevation, ten-year, uh, flood event crossing, which we probably could have done with culverts. But we've nevertheless elected to, uh, develop, build a two hundred and thirty-foot, three-span bridge that's outside the hundred-year flood. Now, this is a Tech Dot standard bridge that we will build, we will own, until you accept it. So, uh, with regards to the infrastructure work in Wellborn Way and all the public utilities in Wellborn Way and that bridge totaling roughly four and a half million, I'd like for some help with engineering and staff to designate who the person from the city side will be to help us come to agreement on what is a hundred and ten percent. Uh, we have bids. Your ordinance requires three bids, and I couldn't find three people to come build a bridge. So we've got, uh, we've got really one bidder, J three, but we're funding all of it, so there's no public funding involved in it. Uh, but I want to get that number right and come to a quick term, because we really would like, if, should we get your approval this evening? And should we be able to get, uh, the final plat approval, uh, in early March, we want to turn around immediately and pull a building permit and get started. We've got, we think we've got all the horses in the stalls ready to go. We've got some detailed items to finish with the city, though. One is coming to terms on exactly what that amount is, but, and, and, and I don't really, I'm not going to worry about a couple of thousand here or there. I just want us to come to terms on what the amount is. Uh, two, also on processing the draw requests. Uh, the way the, the way the exception is, uh, or the staff, uh, recommendation is, uh, written that, uh, part A, the city has irrevocable right to withdraw the funds. I take no exception to that should I default. But I want to be in control of that money, it's our money, until you accept the bridge. It's my bridge, and I want to be in, in control of those withdrawals with your approval, with whoever the city elects to be that. But, uh, we can't put the money into an escrow account and then have the city go take it out the next day. And that's kind of what this says. So I want to be in a position to control the withdrawal of that, subject to monthly draws. We will, we will retain ten percent. We retain ten percent on everything, because Texas property code is rather draconian and lien rights, and we, we specifically take ten percent retainage on each draw to protect our exposure to lien law in Texas. So, uh, we will, we will retain the ten percent, not only on the apartment development, but also on the public infrastructure work. Our goal is to get the public infrastructure done within twelve months, hopefully sooner, and have you accept it, because until you accept it, I suspect I won't be able to get an occupancy permit. And typically, we try and pull occupancy permits in the thirteenth month when we break ground, and we will, uh, permit through the twenty-second month. So we want to permit, we want to occupy, get an occupancy permit for the leasing, sales, amenity office, and I'll, and probably the first two buildings, with any help on weather in the early months by the thirteenth month. So I'm giving you more than you probably want to know, and I know we want to move on, but I'd like to end it with, uh, thanking you for that. I also need the testing requirements for the bridge, because you give testing requirements in your ordinance for roads and utilities, but not for bridges. And I want to make sure I get that folded in right to your satisfaction, so we don't have an exception at the end of the project that, well, the testing wasn't done right. So I want to make sure we're clear and we have that really ironed out as well. And then, and final, I'd like to also say that with the two hundred and forty-two acres, we're contemplating about seven hundred units of various components, be it BTR, single-family attached, individual, single-family. That's what we're all about here for Kerrville. We suspect that under some of the existing. We suspect that under some of the existing zoning, there's some mixed-use opportunities, and we will look at that as maybe there's some complementary neighborhood retail that might come in either on this location or over on Highway 38, or we're calling it Curville 38. It's on Loop 534 over by Singing Wind, and only with your approval would we move on that. So it's largely going to be residential. Thank you very kindly.
Thank you. And I think these are things that Drew, you guys will be, EA, you'll be working out with him very much, so. All right. Counsel, any last comments? We don't have a motion yet, but any last comments before we do a motion?
As soon on the, well, where do you want to start?
Let's start with you. You haven't said much yet.
I think I understand what we're doing, so.
Okay, very good. Okay, Ronan?
Going back to the escrow refunds, I still need help understanding this. Is the developer or the city, one of us is going to be, has the ability to withdraw? Are they planning on building the infrastructure, though?
They are building the infrastructure. They would take the withdrawals to pay their contractor with our approval based on our inspections. If they default, we use that money to go build the infrastructure.
Okay, because what I think I'm getting a little bit confused on is the refund that we keep talking about, that provision. That says that when there's funds deposited in escrow for infrastructure and the construction is done by a party other than the developer and the city, then the remaining funds, upon the request of the property owner, will be refunded after completion and after the city accepts the improvement. But this construction is being done by one of those parties?
Their contractor. No, it's their contractor, so it's still-
It's their contractor, so it is a third party?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That's where I was-
Yeah.
-getting the, the mix up. Okay, so I, I understood the first waiver. I understood the third. That one was where I was confused on, and the, the refund, how we're, how we're lying out what specifically we're wavering. And I guess this is going to be one of the provisions that you're going to try to bring back to us to resolve that. Am, am I right on that?
Revisions.
Okay.
Yes.
You good?
That's all I had? Yeah, I'm good. I appreciate that clarification.
Just because we're not involved in this, and so is there, will there be, is there some clarity that needs to be given to the language as far as being able to withdraw the funds, or is, are you comfortable that it's saying only if there is a default? The, 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 I mean, I, I want the comfort level for-
The, the city would not be withdrawing funds unless they default.
And you, and the language is, is clear?
We'll tie that up in the agreement.
Okay, okay. And then, as far as, since this is the first project with, with the testing requirements and the draw requests, I mean, all, I know that'll all be taken care of internally, right?
Right. The engineering department also is the project manager for city projects, where they actually do go through and do, as, as owner representative, percentage drawdown. So Kyle and his team are familiar with that as well.
There's nothing that, that you feel like hasn't already been?
They'll be working through the engineering testing, as you mentioned, on the bridge, because we don't have a standard specification for that.
That is something you're aware of?
Yeah. It's, it's outside of the subdivision code, but it is part of the project, and they've been, they've started-
And then, none of those things are directly-
Right.
-for tonight's consideration, but just since, since we've got, since we've got the customer here.
Okay, all right. I would support it. I, I think that the risk is, is minimal, and I think that there's, I, I can understand from the developer's point of view that this is beneficial. So I, I am supportive of it. Do we have a motion, Counsel? I will move then, that we will, we approve a request for, whoops, a request for the granting of the three major waivers. And what else do I need with that?
With the recommended terms?
With the recommended, to approve the waiver with the recommended terms, yes.
I'll second that.
All right. Shelley, are we okay with that? Okay, all right, good. We have a second. All in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimously approved. All right. Thank you, Counsel. We're plowing some new ground here. 6B, Shelley?
Resolution authorizing execution of an advanced funding agreement, AFA, with the Texas Department of Transportation for a transportation alternative set aside, TASA project. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
There are no-
No, no speakers. Okay, very good.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel.
Good evening, sir.
How are we all this evening? Let me get this thing set up here for you. Wanted to bring this to you for a brief recap. It's been a while since we've discussed this one. In, in 2021, the TechStop Transportation Alternatives Program came out. This was awarded in, in October of '21. We had three applications. One was awarded. It's been a long, arduous process. Just to give you an idea, it's been through five reviewers at the TechStop level. So last, last thing we had was in July. There we go. I was trying to get to the slides here. Last thing we had was in July. It was a, basically an oversight review of city staff, making sure that we're comfortable, have certified training, whatnot. Previously, we had taken a very similar action by Counsel for resolution support during the application phase. This is basically, now that we're awarded, my screen went blank. Yours is still there, okay. Now that we're awarded, this is a secondary action that's required by the state to finalize the, the funding agreement. Basically, what this resolution will do is get us to the next phase. We'll procure a design firm, get into construction, and actually get this thing going. So just to recap, historically, so now, you know, graphically, this is what we're looking at. Hill Country, Coley, and Wesley Drive, putting sidewalks on both, both sides of the road, and filling in the gaps where, where we don't have sidewalk. That's just a brief overview of what, what I have for this one, and if you have any questions, I'm, I'm here for them.
Do you have questions for him? So this is nothing but sidewalks adding or new on basically those three streets, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Questions? Anybody?
I just want to clarify that, that there were three. I think sometimes the community is still wondering what the pending situation is on. There were three that were submitted.
Correct.
And this is the only one that got granted.
That is correct. So a, a lot of the citizens concerned is the one with the bridge.
Right, the Sydney Baker Bridge.
That was this one. TechStop actually requested us to expand to this area. The original request by the city was the bridge. They requested us to expand beyond that in, into, to these limits, and then later on, the, the request was, you know, get, get all on-system stuff off. We will handle that, and, and from my understanding, that design is actually in, in progress. And so the off-system stuff is 20% local match by the city, where we were trying to get the district to do it, but now they're actually ponying up a little bit more by doing the design themselves.
Design on the bridge?
On, on the sidewalks, around the bridge. We don't, we don't know the full level of the scope of what they're doing just yet.
Thank you.
But I think it needs to be very clear, this has nothing to do with the Sydney Baker Bridge.
No, ma'am. Just the three, that's why I wanted to bring that forward, just those three little roads that we've got around the hospital.
Exactly, exactly. Do we have any speakers? Shelley, you said we did not have. That's right. Okay, we're, we're in number three here tonight, so. All right, staff. Are we ready for a motion?
I'll move that we approve Resolution Number 04-2023 and authorize the city manager and the mayor to finalize and execute any actions necessary to satisfy any TechStop requirements. Do we have a second?
We have a second. All in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. All right, thank you very much. One more, Kyle. Shelley, if you will read this in for us?
For the public safety facility wastewater realignment project in the amount of $347,777, and there are no citizen speakers signed up.
Thank you.
Okay. Just to, again, a brief recap, public safety facility, we had the bond election last year. We've gone through the RFQR, RFP process. We'll be bringing that ranking. We'll bring the ranking for the building components next council meeting. Right now, we're all in, in review of those, trying to, you know, determine our individual rankings. This is subsequent to that, getting out in front of it, not, you know, not having a building contractor mess with our large wastewater lines. So what you'll see here is the overall construction timeframe is, is 2024 for that building. What this one is, is doing is getting us before the building contractor gets in here. So what that's actually going to look like is, basically, I kind of took the Randall Scott rendition, just to give you an idea of why we want this relocated, right through the middle of, of the proposed, you know, draft site plan, proposed building. What we would do is, let me see if I can remember how to get this marker. Right around the outer limits, we would have this in a parking area, around, you know, away from the building, away from everything. I don't know if you can actually see that. I'm, maybe I'm using the wrong tool here. But basically, it would go in the outer, outer parking areas away from the building. And so we want to get that in front, get that done before anybody hits the site for the building contractor.
Which side will it go on?
So you can see that the green is the existing. You've got kind of the light blue line over there. What amounts, it's the right-hand side, but it's actually the north side. And so it pushes it towards the edge of the property.
Okay.
Okay, so yeah, right, right here.
Right there. Okay. Okay.
That's all I had?
All right, questions? Counsel?
When are we starting?
As soon as you give me the-
All right. Do we have a motion?
I will make the motion to authorize the city manager to finalize and execute the contract.
Do we have a second?
Second.
From Kim? All in favor, raise your right hand, please. And it is unanimous. Thank you, Counsel. Go build, all right? We have, we almost made seven o'clock. Are there any items to be put on the executive session for the future, or, no? Are there any items for future agendas?
I have nothing specific, but I would like to see if staff can review the pending agenda list that we get every, I don't know, you know, other week or every week, I guess, and see which items we could probably push up. I know there have been several in the pending list that are, don't have a date specified for it, and some I've seen since I was, I got on Counsel, and so I'm wondering, do we not need some of them? I think the city manager and I had some discussions. I had requested an item, and staff was able to work with a constituent about it, and I didn't see a need for anymore, and so I told them, you know, we can go ahead and withdraw that. So just looking through that pending, see what we can clean up, if we can bring stuff forward or, you know, clean them out if we don't need to do them anymore. I'd just like to see that kind of move a little bit.
Yeah, we do that periodically, but we'll certainly be happy to refresh that list.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have reached the end of the meeting, and at 7:04 on Valentine's Day, we are adjourned. Go home to your sweethearts.